The hearing will begin with a staff report followed by the applicant's statement, which in this case, the applicant is Boundary County. Then, the floor will begin, will be open to allow the comments from members of the public. First, from those who are in favor of the proposal, next, from those who are neither in favor or opposed to the proposal, and finally, from those who are opposed to the proposal. After each person speaks, members may ask questions of that speaker. After each member of the public has had the chance to speak, the applicant will be allowed to make a closing statement to rebut any concerns, answer any questions, or clarify the proposal. Again, members may ask questions. Once this process is concluded, I will close the hearing, and no further testimony will be taken at this time. The commission members will discuss the application and work toward reaching a decision. Are there any questions on procedure? I now open the public hearing for the county commissioners to consider planning and zoning file 20-0180, a land use code text amendment by Boundary County. This is a proposal upon which the county commissioners will render a decision. Present are county commissioners, members of Ruin Jaeger, our planning and zoning director, and Michelle Rowe, who also are our clerk. Is there any member of the commission who has a conflict with the interests and cannot participate in this hearing? Myself, Wally Kesar, and Robertson?
No.
I will ask for a staff report.
Thank you Chairman, Claire Marley, for the record. I am the acting zoning administrator. And you've summarized what we're here today to do, and that is to consider replacing our existing code enforcement, which is known as section seven of our current planning and zoning ordinance, with a new one. So essentially, it will, the one that's in our record now will go away, and this will be replacing it should you approve that. And just a couple of background things, you did receive a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Their recommendation was eight to zero to one. The one to center was one who wanted to keep the infractions in as a penalty. And that thinking stated to me later that was his reasoning for it. So, as our staff report says, the planning departments assigned with receiving and investigating all potential land use code violations. So that means it's limited to those things that are zoning and subdivision related. We run about 50 cases, since 2020, we've had between 50 and 60 cases. And rough estimate, maybe 30% of those are now resolved, 30, we're guessing, I have a printout of that. And I looked real quick just before this meeting to see what kind of time we put into violations, man-hours, whether it be us or someone else. As of the start of the fiscal year, we have 35 hours into receiving and treating violations and trying to abate those, so that's.
For all of those?
No, just for the. That's just for start of the year.
Oh, gotcha.
And so, about a year ago, as we were looking at several repeat violations and ones that we hadn't been able to resolve by several letters from us, we met with the sheriff, the undersheriff, and our county prosecutor at that time, Travis Hall, and talked about our current code and what needed to be adjusted in order to be able to effectively administer those code violations. The result of that was an early draft that we took back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a first draft review, and then back to Travis for further comment on what their suggestions were. I think we went three different times to the workshops at planning and zoning level. And as I said, the initial agreement amongst all those whom we met with was that we needed a complete overhaul because there were enough significant problems with current code. And so I have a couple of slides just to go over what the changes are, and I know that you have the actual document in front of you. I also wanted to share with you, this is out of the local land use planning act, and these are our authorities by which we're allowed to do any of these things that are proposed in the code. And this is under 67, 65, 27, violations, criminal penalties, and enforcement. And it highlighted the ones that we are proposing within this code section that may be declared a misdemeanor. They also may provide for a finer imprisonment or both. They can include infractions. There's been some discussion about whether counties can do infractions for zoning violations. And when we left off last with Travis, we hadn't resolved that, and it was decided to stick with the misdemeanors. And then civil actions, you're allowed to seek an injunction to halt a use or something that might cause a potential hazard. You have the ability to go to court to seek abatement. And those are all those highlighted sections of that code, so you can see where we get the authority from. Next slide is a summary of, a brief summary of the current code versus the proposed. Highlighted on the left side are those that are current. A hundred dollar infraction for a variety of violations is proposed or is existing. However, the code also mentioned that a judge could impose up to higher fines, but the state of Idaho sets the maximum for infractions. So on the right-hand side in the blue is the proposal to remove that and stick with the misdemeanor only. Second line down, our current law says each week is a violation, whereas you can consider each day a violation, a separate violation. And so the proposal is to go to each day, which was supported by Travis Hall. Again, the left side, the current is forgiven if you pay up to a fine of $1,000. So in a situation where they don't want to abate, they actually have an opportunity to pay $1,000 and never meet your code. And all felt that that was inappropriate and really didn't get us to what the goal is, which is that you meet your codes. So that's removed, and then the violation remains a violation under the present code, as well as if you adopt this one today, then it says those previous violations remain violations as a specific part of this document, so that it can't start the clock all over and then some claim that they're not going to be under this violation code because they will be. Next is a list of the types of violations, which your current code, I think, has at least a dozen or more different types of violations. And the county civil council and us agreed that it was really just either you failed to do something, or you did something and it was a violation, and that's really all we need to say. So a violation is simply an action or an inaction. That's not in accord with your land use law. Left side again, an illegal structure allowed to be remedied with a fine of up to $5,000. So now they boosted up to $5,000 fine, and they could walk away with that or curing their violation. Again, that believed by all that who looked at this to be inconsistent with what your goal is, which is to see that there is abatement. So there are, in the document, several remedies. They're all outlined under section 4.6, and they include a stop work order, which means if you're beginning to work and we realize that there's an issue like maybe just as simple as not getting a permit, the county wouldn't be allowed for a stop work order. We included in that section the ability to weather in something. So let's say their roof isn't on yet, or they're not closed in, they would be allowed to close it in, so that they don't have weather damage, but not give up the right to still look at that as a violation. Your civil actions and injunctions as mentioned by authority of Idaho code. And then adding recovery costs, and those can be obtained for your costs if you were to go to court, if you were to have any kinds of planning services, legal services, other sorts of things that cost you money, you have that ability in your code now to seek those to be recovered. withheld permit until they do the proper permitting, with the exception, obviously, if they needed a placement permit, you're going to be granted one if you seek one and meet the code. And then prosecution, the ability for the prosecutor to seek those civil or those criminal penalties. And then lastly, notice to title, and we'll talk about that one in just a bit on that a little bit further. Or next, I think it's next to the last slide on the comparisons, is voluntary compliance is under current code and it remains under the proposed code. The reason being is you want to be able to seek compliance the easiest way possible, which is we first send out a letter saying we've been made aware of this violation, and you have 14 days to respond. I would say maybe we're successful 30, maybe 30, 40% of the time. So you don't want to go to the harshest punishment, you want to seek through that letter first. And that remains our goal in this proposal, is that it remain voluntary compliance. The next down is may report violations directly to the sheriff. The sheriff is not wanting to be involved in that, did not want to, nor did the prosecutor, because there's no collection of evidence, there's a violation that's noted, and it's really land use based, and they want those who are involved in land use to collect the evidence and be able to show which law is being violated. And so that section is removed, with the note that the sheriff reminded us that if there's any violation non-land use, such as child welfare issues, we do have to report those directly to the sheriff, which we were to encounter in the field. Next one down, failure to abate the matter sent to the sheriff. Again, it would go to the prosecutor, because the prosecutor is the one who would have to build a record in the event that was needed. And then the last is that there is, if there is an immediate action needed because of a threat to health, safety, or welfare, then there are actions that you can take either civilly or criminally. Last slide on the comparison is a two-step process for notifying is remaining the same. 10 business days is used in your current code, and we went to a straight 14 days. So each of those, the first letter is the not certified, it goes out to the individual, advises them that there may be a potential violation, and here's what we find, and please advise us if you're able to abate it, and if you think it's a letter that was not valid, to let us know those reasons why. Second letter goes out, and at that time, it reminds them of the potential to turn it over to the prosecutor. I copied or has copied all of these particular statements, or I mean drafts of the code. You have them in front of you, but if we need to go back to look at anything, we'll put those up on the screen. All the agencies as required by law did receive our notices, and at the time of the staff report, there were no written agency comments to the record. We did receive a couple of written and oral testimony. You have the written ones in front of you, and the last paragraph, oral testimony, Mr. Polin, who's here today, I believe he's here today, had testified, and then also brought a letter or two to the Planning and Zoning Commission, called out a typo which we have fixed. And then Ms. Adrian Norris also asked for clarification on civil actions. Her question was about if a tree fell onto someone else's property, would we, through this code, enforce that? And the general answer is not, because it wouldn't be a zoning violation, potentially not a zoning violation. And then there was one additional, which I don't think we had in our slides, one additional one that came in.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
You might put it on there.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. And that one also is in front of you. He had raised a question about an unelected bureaucrat being able to civilly charge a citizen, a bureaucrat, whomever that is, is not, it's your prosecutor who is authorized by law to bring that. And then he objected basically to the jail time. So you have that as well in front of you. So we've already talked a little bit about your enacting laws, it comes under Idaho Code's Local Land Use Planning Act in your own section of code. We had one discussion after, let's see, after January, we met with your current prosecutor and Bill Wilson, who's online with us today by phone, and we talked about one issue, which was the notice to title. A lot of, not a lot, a number of communities use what's called notice to title, and that's when you're unable to get an abatement. You have, or they have chosen an option where you can record a document that says this remains a violation, and that is, can be taken against their title. In other words, they could, their bank could be aware of that violation, and then they would have to abate it in order to remove that notice. And one thing Anna Kay and Bill both talked about, the prosecutor and the civil deputy prosecutor, was that the current written suggestion is that it be after the courts have determined that it's a violation, and as Mr. Wilson pointed out, you can record a decision by a court anyhow, so you don't need to wait for that, you can do that ahead of that. And it's his recommendation that we take out the part that says that we have to wait first for a court action. And I think I captured that, yes, I did. So where it reads now is, the notice to title is in addition to other actions, and they may be filed with a recorder notifying of a zoning violation that has been determined in a current reading from the P and Z is by the court to be in violation, and the suggestion is to take out the words "by the court." If the board of county commissioners decides to make that change and remove the words "by the court," you have to determine that it's a non-material change. In other words, it's not significant that anybody would have been effusive and then heard something wholly different. That's a decision you have to make, because Idaho's code says if you make a material change, you have to go back through a second hearing. So that's part of what you would consider. Any questions on that aspect? So, the findings are somewhat similar to your zone changes, where you have to show that it's consistent with your comprehensive plan. So we can have five short findings there about why it is. And then you have a draft motion, which includes if you determine that you want to take those words out, that you make an indication that it's not material, or if you find that it is material, then you need a further public notice. That's the end of my report.
Are there any questions from the members of the staff? Okay, seven questions. I will now ask the applicant to step forward and give us opening, save, and. That'll be me, or you?
Oh, it was me.
Okay, it is you.
So you're ready for public if you don't have questions.
I don't have any questions, so.
So then you can go into public comment if you don't have questions for me.
Yep. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of this application? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Jump on, Angel. I sat in on a number of the meetings where the planning and zoning board worked through the details and the discussion as to what went into this revision. It's a pretty big revision, and the penalties are a lot more severe than they were. But I believe that the zoning board considered the ramifications of all of that, and they didn't, they didn't make these changes lightly. And they did hash through a lot of the possible questions that could go on. If you haven't had a chance to ask those questions yourself, you could ask above them. But I believe they have done that due diligence to try to work out a good set of revisions that will work. So I would ask that the county adopt them and begin to use them now to clean up this county. This should give, you know, you folks the tools you need to really make a difference, and I think it would be of tremendous benefit to our community and a lot of the other folks in the county as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's no one else, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition, actually, that is uncommitted to this post-proposal would like to speak?
A question.
Yes.
Which is, so these are changes to basically.
What's your name, please?
Mercy Bushnell.
Okay.
So basically, people who have been in violation before that it's not resolved yet, will they be held to these penalties or the old ones?
I would say to these.
To these.
Yes.
So current ongoing violations, held to the new penalties.
Yes. Otherwise, yeah, it'd be like nothing happened. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Well, there's no additional comments. If there are no further comments, I will close this hearing to additional testimony and call for a decision amongst members. Do we like? Out. We can discuss this a little bit.
Yeah, so, I'm not necessarily opposed to that revision. What I'm opposed to is not defining our ordinance clearly before we put the penalties in place. We're kind of cart before the horse in this situation. I kind of expressed that declare a while ago. I wanted, I'd like to redefine some of our ordinance, so it's what I like before I vote for a violation on that. I also think that our, the misdemeanor and the $1,000 and, you know, all that stuff, that's maybe a little bit more than how we'd like to go.
Could we invite Bill to talk about misdemeanor and how we've used it? I've worked with Bill in the past couple of years prior to being here at Boundary County, and why we choose not necessarily a misdemeanor, because the $1,000 doesn't come to the county planning or county coffers, it goes to the courts, and how we've looked at how that's not necessarily always the best path.
Yeah. Bill, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, sure. So, thank you for the opportunity to provide some commentary on this. I have some experience with planning enforcement in Bonner County, where I've had, you know, almost a decade there now. And first of all, I have to say I commend the planning commission and Claire and Tess for presenting you guys with this. It's well drafted, and, you know, planning enforcement is like Goldilocks, it's not too hot, not too cold, you need to get it just right. And so it's really a fine question of what is the right amount of, you know, enforcement that we need. And my experience has been that civil enforcement is oftentimes the preferred remedy because it doesn't involve criminal penalties, and that is one of the benefits to it. The downsides to the civil enforcement is that it is much more inefficient, it takes a long time, and in some cases, is not as effective. Particularly when dealing with difficult landowners, or perhaps people who own junkyards or other sorts of things like that, you find that they're not very interested in civil enforcement anyway, and that giving a judgment is not always decisive. The alternative, criminal punishment with a misdemeanor, is really, it can be difficult politically, I think you guys are speaking to that. It is a lot more of an effective tool, it's a lot faster, because speedy charter rights are involved. It also has the threat of criminal punishment, and people are much more likely to work with us when that is the case. The other benefit to it is that because they'd be subject to criminal punishment, they could be afforded a public defender if they didn't have money to, you know, house a private attorney, and then they have an advocate who could work with the county. I think that the possibility of civil compromise following criminal charges is enticing. Really, I don't think anybody really loves the idea of the criminal punishment, we just want compliance, but it is very difficult to achieve in some cases. So those are the tools you have at your disposal, and my opinion is that if you really do want to affect change, then you have to be willing to use the criminal option when it is necessary. And then we have to, you know, each case is unique, right? So we could also say that in some unique cases, that a civil remedy is more appropriate, but it's hard to say. One related point of the notice to title is kind of, this is one thing that I talked with Claire about, being an effective tool, it's low cost for the county in that we don't have to, at least the way that I envision it, we don't have to litigate the case and have a judgment from the court if we choose to adopt the language that's been presented because, but it does provide some level of protection for subsequent purchasers. And we have found, that's exactly what we have in Bonner County. And we have found that the use of the notice to title is an effective tool, because when people choose to sell their property down the road, they have a strong incentive to get that notice to title removed and correct the error, otherwise their property is not nearly as marketable. So that's another element of this equation, when we're just trying to achieve, get people to comply, for those who don't want to work with us long, or even notice the title can be an effective tool.
Thanks, Bill. I, I don't mind, the notice to title, I don't mind that. The, everything going to a misdemeanor, that's, I sort of have a tough time with that one. And also, the $1,000 I don't mind, but having it every day, Phil, that is, wow, that's pretty excessive, it seems.
I think when the code says that every day is a violation.
Yes.
It's not, we're not saying that we're going to charge, you know, if you have a year's worth of violation, we're not going to charge you $365 counts. I think that that's more included in there, so that there is no argument that the county, either there's like a statute of limitations argument, or that the county waived the right to pursue a violation. If the violation, if the statute of limitations occurred when the violation, or began to run, when the violation was discovered, or when it began, you might think that we could lose that right. So I think it's pretty standard to include that language, not because we're going to bash people over the head with a hundred counts, but just to make sure we don't lose the right to seek the release.
Yeah, I think that might be misunderstood.
Right, I should see that, yeah.
Not necessarily a problem, but it gives you the authority to do that. Not saying that this board or future prosecutors would or would not use it, it gives them the authority to do so. This where, it can be good or bad. You know, if you have an overzealous board or prosecutor, then they could do that.
Yes, they could, that's the way it's written.
Yeah, so there is a possibility that it could be abused in that respect. Possibly?
Yes. Well, it's what the code says. It's not abuse, it's just following what the code says.
Right, but then.
And then that's where I have a problem with this, too, is if this is what's written, that's how it should be enforced. And that's, I don't know if I agree with that.
Is there some way a person can clean that, make that?
Well, my suggestion is we, all this takes so much time, but it's just the truth of the matter. To do it cleanly, we need to go backwards and really look at all of our different codes, well-defined what a junkyard is, what this is, what that is, what constitutes a commercial versus a private junkyard. Get that settled, and then we can revisit the penalties for it. Because if we put the cart before the horse in this situation, then we're enforcing things that I mean and necessarily agree with. The unfortunate truth of how I sit on this.
No, I would agree with that. Is there any more discussion? Do you have anything to add, Claire?
Well, a couple of things. I know we've looked at cart before horse, we have a book full of things that we need to do, and this was an early one that we were asked to look at.
Yeah.
So here we are, a year, yeah, a year that we've been at this. So I would think a penalty is appropriate to fix that, and I agree with you, we do need to fix the junkyard definitions and look at that as well. So I hate to lose that. The next thing is a question to Bill, and that is, in the discussion about each day is a separate offense, could they add language that says for use determining, you know, the basic ability to still stay in court and not lose your statute of limitations, without that being a material change? And if it's a material change, then we'd be coming back getting help. So two-part question to Bill.
Did you get that, Bill?
Could you repeat that for the commissioners, just so I got motioned to just a little bit what I was about to say.
I'll get in that one. I was away from my field, and what I was asking was two-part question, and that was, on the commission, the board commissioners' questions about the each day is a separate offense, whether that could be couched to indicate the reasoning for that is to not lose your position in loss of statute of limitations or other things that you voiced concern about, could that be a added phrase? And the second part of that is, if that were done, would that require possibly a further hearing and a material change?
You know, it's a good question. So basically, what you're asking, if I want to reiterate that, is can we, can we still cite the fact that every day is a violation, but only for purposes of statute of limitations, preserving statute of limitations, and not for multiple causes of action? I don't, you know, I don't know if I can answer that question off the top of my head, it probably requires some research. The other thing, I wouldn't want to completely kind of abandon the possibility that more than one charge might be necessary, right? than one charge might be necessary, right? Because there could be, I mean, you know, the breadth of possibilities in land use violations is so broad, there might be an occasion where we would want to impose multiple counts. I can't give you a, you know, a great example off the top of my head, but I wouldn't want the code to forbid us from doing so. I think it is better to have, leave it as a discretionary thing if that's, you know, I don't know, I guess that's a policy decision for the board to decide, but I don't know if I can answer your first question off the top of my head, I just, that's my concern about it, but I wouldn't want us to completely lose the right if it, if it was necessary in some case.
I do have, Claire Marley for the record, I do have one example of a case where we had posted a stop work order on a violation that was pretty egregious. They tore it down, we went back and placed it again. By the time we went to court, it had happened 57 times, it had been posted and then torn down. And I think this was before Bill's time, but they did charge each day as a separate offense, but actually it was all just one. They just had one offense when the judge finally acted on it. So even though we said 57, it was the judge's determination, it was just common.
Oh, wow.
It said it was all one continuous event or something around. Yeah, I mean, we can't predict what a court would do, right? And then like, right, so I'm sorry, Claire, that I can't give a better answer on that one, but it's just kind of, I don't want to give conclusive legal advice on the fly. It'd be something I'd probably want to take a look at.
Well, is there any more discussion on this? Does anything else? Otherwise I'll call for a motion.
I think we still have some work to do.
Chairman, the center motion is the motion table on our next meeting before you is April 2nd. I know that we had a couple of matters, but you needed to be finished by 3:00, is that right, on that day? April 2nd?
At this point, I don't have my schedule.
April 2nd.
So if we, if we move to deny this, for my clarification.
Yeah, we're on Easter Sunday, Monday, so we are only Tuesday.
So we fix some of these other things that I'm looking at and then to bring this back up, does it have to go to the full?
We don't do Easter.
Yes.
But we could table this for a year.
For the courthouse.
If you can.
Okay.
And then bring it up when it's approved.
Yes.
Okay.
However, I think if you're really stretched out that much, you'd probably want to send it back anyhow, just to be clear with your vote notices.
I, I would agree with that, but that would give us the time where, I mean, I don't know where these guys are sitting, but as far as I'm concerned, I think we're at least a few months out to fix some of these other things that I'm looking at.
At least.
Yes. Yeah, I know the reality of it is, I don't really have a date to put on that. Could I put a future time, say if I made a motion, the table just is open ended?
Claire Marley, for the record, if you don't have a specific date and time, then we have to re-advertise at your level. However, we could put it on April 2nd and looking at that as, if that's a Tuesday, am I correct?
Yeah.
And that's the one that we have a couple of items on already. You could, at that time, we'd know whether or not there was enough to still move forward or to table it indefinitely.
Could we do it the 9th? That's another, next, the following Tuesday, April, but if you are.
On my calendar I can, but I don't know about yours.
The 9th of April?
It's, it's down with the courthouse.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So all we have to do is advertise in the paper for two weeks again to have this hearing at our.
50 days in advance, so that's a month out from any given timeframe. So if we decide today, then you, you're a month out.
So I move the table or continue this hearing to a future date to allow further consideration of the proposed application or to allow review and approval of written findings and decisions.
All's in favor?
Hi.
Hi. What's your case?